I'd like to call to order the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners Legislative Meeting for October the 21st. And we will begin just introducing ourselves as we go down the DS, so you'll know who's working very hard in the county for you.
I'm Bridget Jordy, and I'm the Public
Leslie Hervey, interim clerk.
Commissioner Alicia Reese, Vice President of the Commission.
Good afternoon, I'm County Commissioner Denise Dreehouse.
Jeff Alito, County Administrator.
Vice President of the Council of the Board.
Thank you all. Stephanie Summarodumas, President of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners. And we will start a meeting as we always do with silent prayer, and then ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I would just ask that we continue to pray against this murderous spirit that's going through our land and other regions. We just have to continue to pray and hope that things will get better, and I believe that they will. In addition, General Colin Pyle, a very great American who has done very prestigious things during his lifetime, we will be honoring him with a proclamation coming up in just the near future. So if you would also say a prayer for him and his family. So a moment of silence. Thank you, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second, Commissioner Summarodumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. And so our next item on the agenda is presentations, and we have a proclamation to acknowledge Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and Vice President Reese will lead this proclamation.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Trying to get all my documents, if you will. Are we doing a proclamation for Mr. Powell, General Powell as well?
No, no.
Okay. Ready for my Chief of Staff, thank you. Do you have a copy of proclamation?
Yes.
We're gonna all read it.
Well, you have a portion for me.
Okay.
Okay.
I wish I had my portion. Here we go. All right, I got it. Whereas in 1985, the American Cancer Society began National Breast Cancer Awareness Month as an annual campaign to raise awareness about the impact of breast cancer. And whereas the National Breast Cancer Foundation estimates one in eight women in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer in her lifetime, and an estimated 43,600 women will die from breast cancer in the United States.
Whereas breast cancer is the most common cancer in American women, except for skin cancers, and on average, every two minutes, a woman is diagnosed with breast cancer in the United States. Whereas according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, one out of every hundred breast cancers diagnosed in the United States is found in a man. And whereas there are over 3.8 million breast cancer survivors in the United States.
And whereas the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office wears pink badges yearly in support of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and whereas in Hamilton County, there are many organizations and partners that continue to help breast cancer patients search for a cure through vital research and educate our community about the importance of early detection being the best protection, including the American Cancer Society, Making Strides Against Breast Cancer, UC Health, the Barrett Cancer Center, TriHealth, the Susan G. Coleman Foundation, the Erica J. Holman Foundation, the Black and White Cancer Survivors Foundation, Sinai Temple Number 59, Shriners and Court Daughters Number 35, and many more.
Now whereas be it proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners recognize October 2021 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, be it further proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hamilton County, Ohio hereby proclaims the 23rd day of October 2021 as Breast Cancer Awareness Day in all of Hamilton County. Madam President, we have a couple people that's also on Zoom, but I wanted to take a moment, if you will, to acknowledge, obviously, breast cancer is something that's killing way too many people, cancer in general. We lost Todd Pirtune to cancer. We have so many people that were losing to cancer on a daily basis, children, mothers, grandmothers, fathers, nieces, nephews, and that's one thing that we all could come together because it's an equal opportunity killer, no matter what your race is, no matter what your gender is, no matter what your income is. Today, I wanted to have the opportunity, and I want to thank my colleagues for us to be able to acknowledge this day, even though it is a national Awareness Month, and obviously October has a lot going on. But I wanted to just take a moment in honor of my mother as well, who could not be here, is not here because she was succumbed by breast cancer. She is someone that grew up here in Cincinnati, in the West End, and had a life with many talents, as a singer. We have our stars outside. If someone said, is this the Black Music Walk of Fame today? And I said, no, we got some other stars coming today, survivors. But I wanted to just share this because it was a big loss for our family. My father's here, Dr. Stephen Reese, Sr., and I want to thank him and my brother and sister watching. But our family was shook by cancer, breast cancer. I was at the Barrett Center with my mother. We had no idea at the time what the results were. And I remember them walking in, the doctor saying, she's got stage four, and at that time was diagnosed to only have a couple months if she was lucky, weeks where predicted that she would be able to survive. She also had multiple sclerosis and was fighting that at the same time. And I just remember almost passing out. I just couldn't take it. And even with that, I was on city council, I went back to work, I should not have gone back to work, but you know my commitment to the people, but I probably should not have gone back to work. And that day was just the worst day ever. We began the journey, my mother's thing was, well, hold on, how do I fight this? Now, you gave me a couple weeks and maybe months, but there's a higher power. God is in control. What do I need to do? And so we went through that whole process of chemotherapy and radiation and all of the new things that they had available, research, and I just want to personally thank the Barrett Center because my mom, she fought for 12 years.
Wow.
12 years. And that wouldn't have been possible without the nurses and the doctors, and of course, her strength, because now I'm around that age. My mother died at 57, I'm not 57, but she got diagnosed in her 40s. And I look back and say, man, how did she do it? And so we've got a lot of survivors today, but also we tie in the music, and we tie in the breast cancer. My mother recorded an album in the 60s. My father had his own record label at that time. This is why I know so much about music and the industry. And so a couple years ago, there was a record company out in Loveland in Hamilton County was looking for her, and we kept saying, who is this looking for her? She's not alive. And so we went out to tell him that she's not alive, and they said, we want to re-release her album, we've been looking for her for years. And they had sold hundreds of thousands then, and they rerecorded it in pink. That meant so much to me because they, once they found out about her story, they said, we're gonna re-release it, but we're gonna make it pink. And so I know Nicki Minaj said she had the first pink album, but I'm here to tell you, Barbara Howard had the first pink album. Madam President, we have some survivors in the room and some organizations that certainly work every day to educate people, early detection is the key. If my mom maybe had gotten a mammogram earlier, now we have new research that tells us that women of color, particularly African-American women, you can't wait to 50, you got to go earlier. So I was able to go earlier, others are able to go earlier. We keep getting new research, new technology, and because of the survivors talking to different people, we got people getting their mammograms early, because early detection definitely still is the key, and so we just want to encourage people to do that. So today, we just wanted to honor some of these survivors, and if I could have the Commissioners, all three of us out here, to hand out these certificates to thank the organizations. We're gonna have the walk this Saturday, that's why we made that Breast Cancer Awareness Day here. We couldn't have it last year, but that's a reunion. We got families that show back up to walk for their loved ones. We've got young people, we've got seniors, we got people walking for folks we lost, we got people who are walking with the survivors, and people walking for the future toward a cure. So we wanted that day. And then lastly, I do want to say, when I was at city council, my Chief of Staff from college, we were best friends at college, he became my Chief of Staff, he actually got diagnosed with breast cancer. He went in for outpatient procedure this past year during COVID, and they said, oh my goodness, you have breast cancer. And they were able to remove it because it was early, and he's still alive today. So me and you also need to get a mammogram. So with that, we'll come forward and acknowledge those survivors that are here, and there's some that's also on Zoom that we'll acknowledge as well. Right, Bridget? Okay. Check, okay, there we go. And we'll take photos. President Dumas, you're in the middle there. Commissioner Dreehouse, you're on the other side, or Commissioner Dumas. And they're not in any order, so it doesn't mean in terms of importance, but Councilwoman Jan Michelle Lemon Kearney, a lot of people didn't know she is a survivor from breast cancer. We apologize, we ran out of some of these folders, but we'll get up to you. Thank you so much. And if we can have you right here, we're gonna take a picture, so everybody gets a picture. Come right here. There we go, you're in the middle. Yep. Thank you, and this is worth the time because you all have been through a lot worse than this. We want to also acknowledge the American Cancer Society that sponsors the walk this The Susan G. Coleman Foundation, is anyone here to represent them? You got another one yourself, but... She's a national ambassador. I want to thank Sherri Hughes, who documented her journey with people. A lot of people said, be ashamed, she says, no, I'm gonna document. Michelle Young, what's the House Bill number?
By the end of this year, every woman, dense breast or not, will be monitored early, and it will be paid for, and you'll be given notice. And we're gonna get that done, thank you, Sherri. We're gonna get that done, thanks to Sherri, UC, and this extraordinary group. We're gonna get this done, we hope, by February and by next year. There are gonna be new initiatives, and if I have my way and we have our way, this city is gonna be the model for the nation on how we stop breast cancer. Right away.
And that's, who are the sponsors? Representative Cedric Denson and...
Cedric Denson and Jean Schmidt, in a bipartisan effort, are making us a model for the nation, and I want to really thank them, they are the dearest of friends. I also want to thank the oncologists that treated Sherri, that treated me, who treated your mom at the Barrett Center. And when I said, look, if I survive, because I was late, I was found late, and I am one out of the 100 who came in that frankly isn't completing mission long-term, and I said, if I survive, and I'm not surviving alone, I'm taking everybody with me in the future. We're all going together, we're women, we're sisters, we're mothers, we're daughters, it's a team effort, and women always hold up the world, you know that. We're getting the job done, thank you.
Thank you so much for that, we'll look for that bill. And we have, who is here, but she's also part of our Keeping Our Streets Safe, a police officer, Angela in Hilton, who's also the sister of Bishop Bobby Hilton, and... Thank you, and she's also the mother of my Chief of Staff, Quentin Monroe, so I know he went through it with her every step of the way. Thank you. Jocelyn Banks. She couldn't make it, okay, we'll get that to her, we'll get it to her. Okay, we'll get it to her. Kim Moreno May. 14-year survivor. Bridget R. Davis. Deborah Winham Mayberry, Mayberry, I'm sorry, Mark. And she also represents the foundation, but she is a survivor. How many years?
14.
14 years. Her husband, Dr. Keith, her husband, Mr. Mayberry, and Dr. Keith Melvin do the Black and White Ball, better get the right husbands, right? And Doris is also on the film board, and she brings all the movies to town, all the premieres, businesswoman. And we'll get the other, anybody else? And we have some others that couldn't make it, but we will get them to them. Alyssa is on Zoom, we'll get the Sinai Temple Shriners there, and the Daughters there, so thank you. Let's give it up to all of the survivors. And we want to thank Sheriff McGuffey's coming in, they got the badges on. Sheriff, come up here so they can see the pink badges. All of our officers in the pink badges here, won't you see that? Cincinnati Police and the Sheriff's are wearing the pink. We want to thank all of you, and I want to also thank, I want to thank my Chief of Staff, Quinton Monroe, Edgar Malcolm, helping to bring this together for us, and also want to thank volunteer, veteran for her services, Teresa Kent, who's a veteran who came up to volunteer to help today, thank you very much, and to Walker Funeral Home, Brian Walker, Pastor Walker, who sponsored the luncheon for the breast cancer survivors with goodies out front, so please get that on your way. Madam President, could we have, I would like the American Cancer Society and the Barrett Center, if they could say a word, we've got the walk this weekend, and just maybe give people the time and the date, and then also from the Barrett Center, if there's anything new that we should be, what could people do?
Hello, my name is Lenora Ayers, and I serve as the Executive Director for the American Cancer Society. We're so thankful and appreciative for this day today, really to recognize our survivors, and that's what this Saturday is gonna all be about. So we will have three different start times on Saturday, just in order to take extra precautions with the pandemic, that'll be at 8:30, 9:15, and 10:00 a.m. And like you said, Saturday is really our opportunity to remember, to celebrate those who have fought and are still with us, to remember those that we have lost, and to continue to fight back against this deadly disease. So the American Cancer Society is so proud to be a partner with so many organizations in this room, to continue to make an impact in the fight through research here at the Barrett Center, as well as nationwide, through our Patient Support Services, like Reach to Recovery, and our transportation program, which drives people to and from treatment, and our advocacy efforts, which we talked about, really advocating so that all patients, no matter their insurance status, that they have an equal opportunity to fight back against breast cancer. So we're excited to see everybody out there, it is a reunion, the energy is amazing, and we hope that you all will join us to celebrate, remember, and fight back against breast cancer this Saturday, October 23rd.
This has been such a wonderful event. Thank you, Commissioner Reese, for this proclamation and bringing awareness to breast cancer in Hamilton County. I also want to thank President Summarodumas and Commissioner Dreehouse. Breast cancer is the most common cancer affecting women in the United States. One in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer during their lifetime. For some women, there's an even higher risk, and this is really important, it's based off of family history and personal factors, such as dense breast tissue, genetic mutations, and reproductive history. This emphasizes the importance for women to have annual screening mammograms every single year, starting at age 40, so we can find breast cancers at an earlier stage when they're smaller and more treatable. Every day, I diagnose biopsy and help surgeons remove breast cancer at the UC Health Barrett Cancer Center, and I feel honored to be part of this tough journey for many women in our area. This proclamation is a reminder for women to visit their doctor during the month of October, get a screening mammogram scheduled, so we can take one step closer to winning this fight against breast cancer. Thank you for this opportunity, and I'm looking forward to seeing you guys at Barrett Cancer Center for your screening mammograms.
I think Bridget has Alyssa from the Susan G. Coleman Foundation on the Zoom, I think she's...
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, okay, great, well, thank you so much, I just want to thank you all for being here, and thank Commissioner Reese for putting this together and for this proclamation, recognizing this mission to end breast cancer and what we're all sort of doing together to make that possible. Coleman is really proud to be leading research, advocacy, and patient care services all throughout the country and here in Cincinnati, and I just want to share that we've made some great progress, but you know, in the midst of the pandemic and things that are happening around the world, we have seen some new barriers pop up that Coleman is working really hard to address and be sure that if you need a mammogram, if you need those services, that you are able to access them. So we do have a Patient Care Services Center Treatment Assistance Program here to support anyone who may need it, and we're just really grateful to be a part of this day, so thank you.
Thank you. Madam President, that's all in terms of the speakers, I didn't know if Ms. Sherri wanted to say anything, and then afterwards, people can, you don't have to stick around, I know we got more business we gotta do, we love to... President Dumas always say, we'd love to have you, but you don't have to stay. And you can still get the refreshments out front as you're leaving out.
Hello and good afternoon, giving honor to God first, giving honor to all of the Commissioners here, giving honor to all of our breast cancer survivors here today, giving honor to the leader of our House Bill 371, Michelle Young, who spoke last week in Columbus, as well as Councilwoman Jan Michelle Lemon Kearney, giving honor to all that support breast cancer, US American Cancer Society that's here, Susan G. Coleman, there's so many to thank, the Barrett Cancer Center, where I received my treatment. I'm only gonna stand for a moment just to say that the bill that is being sponsored by Representative Schmidt and Denson, and the bill that I spoke in behalf of last week, almost a week ago, is so critical, and I'm so honored to be a part of that because I did not have any kind of warning. I was very healthy, very fit, running six miles a couple of times every week, swimming one mile a week, avid in my nutrition, all of this, and I did not know there was a silent killer living inside my body. I would not have known but God. I advocated for myself, and I want to encourage all women to be advocates for themselves. I spoke to my OB-GYN, got to know her, we have a relationship, and told her I wanted more testing because I was one of those high-risk people with dense breast tissues that lost her mother, my mother, when she was just in her 40s and I was a young girl. And I didn't know that I too had breast cancer because I had been having 3D mammograms every year of my life since I was in my 20s. And that breast MRI that I had, because I say, the grace of God, that spoke to my spirit and told me I needed to do more, I went to get this test thinking that it was only going to be a baseline for the future, and lo and behold, it discovered a very small tumor in my breast that was invasive ductal carcinoma. And the breast MRI... And the breast MRI detected that. When the 3D mammogram, they sent me back once, they sent me back twice, it never saw it. I still say that your self-breast exam and the 3D mammogram is the things that are the things that will detect breast cancer for most women. However, if you are in that high-risk category, and if you do have dense breast tissue, the House Bill 371 is there to help those women get more testing and find these killer, silent killers, living inside of our bodies early on. I'm living today, I'm doing well, but I'm trying to stay well. And I say, being a survivor is surviving one day at a time. So I want to thank you all for this opportunity just to share a little bit about my story. If you didn't get anything from what I said, hopefully you got, advocate for yourselves. Know your bodies, speak to your physicians, ask questions, and always push to do more. Thank you, honorable commissioners, for allowing me to speak today. And again, to God be the glory. It's my story, and I'm going to always give him the praise. So I thank you all.
Madam President, may I just say a word? Thank you all for being here, especially the organizations that are helping save women's lives every day here in Hamilton County. And to the survivors, my sister is a survivor. She was diagnosed around 50. She's now 58, and so doing well, but the struggle that she went through with all the treatments, the chemo, the radiation, some of the side effects that she still suffers from today, you know, present a real challenge. So thank you for having the courage and the determination to beat cancer, and we admire you. Thank you for coming in today to be recognized.
Thank you. And of course, I always have comments to make. Vice President Reese, I'm thinking that this is, and Denise, you've been here longer than us, but I believe this is a first as relates to recognizing Women for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I would not bet on it, but I believe it. One reason is because of all women up here. There's been a lot of firsts. And Vice President Reese, I want to say that this was just awesome. The reception, the wards that you gave out, recognizing everyone the way you did, I think this was just awesome. I can't think of a better word. Yeah, yeah. And I have a secret. Everybody's hearing what I... I love you, Sherri. I have watched your journey, your strength, how positive you were through that journey, and plus you're great on television too. But I just want to let you know that you are just an example for all of us. So I just wanted to mention that. Madam President, I forgot one person I didn't want to, they couldn't make it, they were coming, but they couldn't make it. I wanted to acknowledge Amber Twitty, or Mother Brenda Twitty, she was to also, she had said she would come, but she wasn't able to make it. So I did want to acknowledge we'll be able to send her her certificate. So, thank you again. Thank all of you. I think that, like you said, the message is, it can hit anybody at any time, and so we gotta come together. And so, thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you.
I want to say that this is the best press crowd we've ever had in the chamber, and I leave it to Commissioner Reese to make that happen. So here we are.
Yeah, thank you all. We will move forward at this time. And also, in October is Domestic Violence Month, and we've been recognizing it really all month. And so what we have tried to do is to bring someone in or some agency in that will speak to the issue. And today, we have Christian Schreplin from Women Helping Women, if she can come forward and talk about this great program that they have.
So, okay, if I lower my mask?
Sure.
Thank you so much again for the opportunity. And as survivors are leaving, it was amazing to watch that, the strength and the fortitude and the resiliency and the healing. What a special event. So I was very happy to be able to witness that. I won't take up too much of your time, but I did want to go through a few slides. It is also Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I want to give you an update on our Domestic Violence Enhancement Response Team, and really look at, you know, quick overview of how it works, what we do, and then specifically, what are we doing with the expansion due to the incredible leadership and the funding that's been authorized by the commission. So essentially, you know, divert, when law enforcement get a 911 call for domestic violence, they're dispatched on scene, they secure the scene, and then they dispatch us when we are in partnership with them. And so we provide immediate safety, safety planning, often relocation, we try to get them into shelter if that is what survivors wish, hotels, stays, and then some wraparound services. So that's in the moment. But what happens after that is our in-house staff follow-up with survivors, we do notification around the legal system process. There's ongoing safety planning that's never stagnant, it's continuing, it's fluid, it's organic, it's ongoing, and it is specific to that survivor's need. And of course, one of the great parts of our agency responding is that we are experts in trauma-informed care. So every time we're interacting and walking that pathway with survivors, it is through empathy, support, and empowerment. And then we also kind of connect the dots and look at to see if there are any police reports that we need to follow up with that were missed, so we can go to the next one. So, we launched divert in collaboration with CPD back in 2018. We were seeing that it is working very well and that there is need for expansion, right? Because domestic violence and intimate partner violence, it knows no zip code. And our vision is regardless of one zip code, we want to show up and provide support. And so with that expansion, we were able to get into a different area of the county with nine additional jurisdictions. And each zone, this is the term we use in-house when we're responding, each zone is containing 37 shifts. Those shifts are tiered. So if an advocate is called out and then another call comes in, we've got a second tier and then a third tier. And so with the expansion, as I said, we went into those nine additional jurisdictions. We are able to get to survivors who haven't been mapped to us, because that's the trend we see that is, that's shown very clearly in the longitudinal study. We're involved with the University of Cincinnati. It's a five-year study they're doing. The majority of survivors we show up on scene to serve have never been connected with a victim service agency, and that is critical in the outcomes we're seeing. Also with the expansion, because we're growing, right? We're trying to get to economy of scale, we needed some more support with a divert supervisor. And then I just want to kind of talk a little bit about this, you know, one point, we do what is called, we've been able to achieve 90% or greater usage. So the clarity around that term is every time, you know, how often is law enforcement calling us out? And it's anywhere from 90 to 100% of the time. And then once we are called, we are responding 100% of that time. A real benefit of having diversified revenue streams that are supporting this is law enforcement has no additional cost burden on this. So this is how we can collaborate and activate. This is just some examples of those additional jurisdictions that we were able to activate and expand to, and then the timeline of what that looks like. And then if you look at this map, what is shaded in blue is our current areas that we are responding, right? That 24/7, 365 days a year, the three tiers, 37 shifts a week in the blue. As you can see in the gray area, those are the jurisdictions that exist in our county that have survivors, but they are not getting a frontline response by advocates. And so really, as we're looking at, you know, outcomes and impact, like I mentioned before, University of Cincinnati, what the data has bared out is we are getting rid of these barriers, right? We're not telling survivors, "Oh, you've got to hop in a car, you've got to find transportation, you've got to come find, you know, our agency within business hours." No. The moment that there's a 911 call and after police are showing up, we're showing up once we're dispatched. So we get out of bricks and mortar, we're into the community, front-facing with survivors and quite often their kids. And with that additional investment, getting into those jurisdictions, reaching survivors that we've not reached before. And I just want to, you know, put a little bit of a pin on this. It's not only that frontline response, it's then everything that happens after that. So there's the immediate support, safety plan, and possible, you know, getting to a hotel stay or in a shelter, but there's a long path after that, right? And so our agency does a lot of the wraparound services, as well as really connecting with other incredible human service, social service agencies in this community, because a survivor's a holistic person with lots of needs. And I'm going to have to put on my glasses for this one. So, you know, we did see some barriers, and then we were able to really navigate with those solutions and make sure that we tackled on, or tackled those barriers. So one is, I think everyone's real, very well aware of workforce during a pandemic. And this is where, you know, creative collaboration is pretty fascinating. Law enforcement worked with us. They started advertising our positions within their social media sites. And so that's where we were able to even get more advocates from the communities that we're responding to, which is a huge value add, and really grateful for that. You know, we had limited access to police radios. So we formed this wonderful partnership, both with funding support that was authorized by the commission to make sure that we have that technology, and then also really working with the Hamilton County Communication Center. So once we purchase those radios, that they get fine-tuned, and then we can go on with business. And then some of those successes, you know, I talked before about that 90% usage rate, so it can range from, you know, 90 up to 100% that law enforcement is utilizing us. And that is a huge benefit and a shift that we've seen between our movements, and we're really grateful for that. And we also, on the backend, before we roll out any expansion, we are taking our time to talk about the protocols, to do the roll calls, to, you know, understand the procedures, to build that trusting relationship, to do trainings. 100% of the time, law enforcement is showing up to that, and they should be commended. And then part of our expansion, we really wanted to get into Colrain District as one of the districts, and so really grateful through the Hamilton County Commission to help us make that possible, as well as YWCA, who had a great relationship there, helping us to get it. And so, you know, we like to look ahead. What do we think, what can we understand might be coming up with trends? So as we kind of finish up the year, and especially in those expanded jurisdictions, we're estimating about an additional 450 requests coming in in this quarter with survivors, meaning that support. As we look ahead into 2022, we're projecting about a 35% increase for divert responses. And to contextualize that, I don't know if any of you are aware, Ohio Domestic Violence Network put out their report in the past two years of the reporting with domestic violence homicides across the state, there's a 62% increase. We're no different than other parts in the state. We're seeing that here too. So we do expect we're going to get even more calls next year with the areas that we're in. And then in looking forward, like I said, you know, getting access to an advocate shouldn't depend on your zip code. So we really want to make sure we're able to show up anywhere and anytime that a survivor needs us. I spoke fast, I flipped through, and I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Thank you for the program and what you guys are doing. I know I asked specifically about, as you looked at expansion, you mentioned Colrain and Norwood, and the question, I asked the question, "How do we decide on those areas?" And you looked at data and statistics where the most need was at that time. But of course, we're expanding everywhere. And I just thank you so much, as I said, for your presentation, because there are victims and survivors listening to you right now. And if they are not, they can pass, whoever is listening can pass the word on. So, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Vice President Reese. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, and I just wanted to take a step back to thank my colleagues, President Dumas and Commissioner Drehouse, because I think I had only been on the job a week, and you were presenting to us on Zoom. And so it was helpful because it's not like we hear from you one time, and we were able to, you were able to talk about the dollars that you received the year before that allowed you to be a part of the county versus just in the city, even though Cincinnati is part of the city, but we also have other cities, villages, and townships. And so that helped a lot, and there were some good questions, good dialogue, and then you were here again. We had a chance to talk. And so now, when you come forward showing the trends, as we are getting ready for our budget time, looking at the trends and how do we, you know, stop that, you know, in terms of, we want those trends going down and not up. So this has been very helpful. And I do want to acknowledge, as we were saying, October is a busy month, but the domestic violence lighting up of the stadiums and all of that, under the leadership of President Dumas. I do want to acknowledge that because it got outside of the walls of our county commission meeting, and now is, you know, whether you're going to the baseball or football, or you're riding by, it's right there. And so I know that that was an initiative that President Dumas put forward and is pushing. So I just wanted to acknowledge, because that's not an easy thing, to get these buildings to light up. So maybe one day, we can have them on the meeting and show pictures or something of those that light up. And I know Commissioner Drehouse has been committed to getting the divert program to expand outside of the city and get it out into all of Hamilton County, because we want everybody, no matter where you live, to be safe. So, again, just want to thank you. And this presentation, what you did earlier helped me understand where we are today. So, thank you.
And the gratitude goes right back to the leadership of the commission, the fact that all of you listened to the data and the realities of what is happening to residents in our county and authorized the $400,000 contract. Otherwise, we couldn't do it, right? We wouldn't have been able to lift up, to show up in those nine additional jurisdictions. So that really speaks to your leadership and activation, and we're grateful.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
And thank you, Kristen, for being here. So, yeah, I think we're all committed to this idea that we want to expand this to every jurisdiction in the county, and it is budget season, and so I think we're all interested in having a report out from the administration related to that budget item. So I'm looking forward to that within the next few weeks, from my understanding. So one question for you, Kristen. Do you know, since the program has started, and it's fairly new in Hamilton County outside the city, do you know how many folks have been seen and helped by the divert team as they have answered these calls?
Yeah, since the launch, I believe we are well over 3,000.
Oh, boy.
Almost 4,000, since we first launched in 2018, focusing in the city and then picking up additional jurisdictions.
That's a really high number.
That's awesome.
That's a really high number. Okay, so I'll look forward to, you know, and I know we're all three committed to this, figuring out what it will take to do this expansion beyond just the jurisdictions that currently have it, and because we really need to make sure that everybody has access to this. So thank you for being here. Thank you to my two colleagues for all of the work that we all three really are doing on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Okay, we'll move forward. Public comments, I have one card.
Heaven just left. Oh, yeah, real, real quick, please, President, call Paul, because he wants to get together with you guys. Because he wants to get together with you guys because he says he wants to be on you guys' schedule. So I left a couple of messages for, for you. Get all the Paul Booth over there at the city.
Okay.
Now, me, I like scientific facts and evidence. I'm giving it to you right now. In 2010, I had a massive heart attack to the point of cardiac arrest. I died that night, some of the best sleep I ever had in my life. I was dead, really dead, okay? They brought me back. I was sick, I was so sick, they ended up throwing me in a nursing home. Okay, I end up in a nursing home. I end up having, the last count they said my heart fraction rate was down to 13 to 12%. The highest is 15. Most people heart rate that low need a fibrillator or some or need a new heart. I had close to 20 diseases hit my body, including cancer. Cancer, which is the deadliest disease on the planet right now, and they still been spending our thousands and can't find a cure. All right? Well, I did my homework about those people on this map right here. They never had the diseases, all right? I started doing what they did, meditation. Guess what? The NWA, the YMCA was so impressed, they did a footage, which I'm going to send it to you. Come out of my pocket, they did it. I'm in the gym today. I weigh about 220, guess what I'm pumping on the bench, 220. I curl 100 pound dumbbells 20 times each in each arm. On the tilt, I'm pumping 200 and something. That shows you, and guess how many pills I'm on today? One. And I won't even take that every day, not just every nod, my leg might swell up. It takes the water, right? That's what I'm saying.
Thank you.
For people that designed this map, you see it's equal to how I look today and what is going on. So that's why I says we got to dig, we got to do our own research and find out.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, we do have a, Carrie Davis is on the Zoom.
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. My turn?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, first off, the power in that room a little bit ago, wow, that was pretty exciting. I wanted to say thank you first to you, Ms. Dumas, for diversifying the Solid Waste Subcommittee. It has been improved. It's not great. They are not giving them any voting powers, the, the new members. So that's a little disturbing, but I want to thank you for advocating for diversity on these boards. It's real important. But I wonder if Ms. Reese heard the thunderous applause throughout southwest Hamilton County last night after I posted the video of the meeting and my phone was ringing off the hook because they were so impressed that Ms. Reese stepped up and called out exactly what we all have been experiencing for so long, which is being told, there's nothing you can do about this, there is no power, you're not allowed to make rules, when the law clearly says that the Board of Commissioners has the ability to make rules. There was some misinformation given in that meeting that is being used to deny and delay the rulemaking process from going forward. And that is that supposedly this has not been tested, these laws have not been tested. So we got to be very careful. Well, the first big lawsuit was back in 1996 and it is labeled by the legal database as a precedent setting case for where a solid waste committee was sued by Clark Landfill. And the solid waste committee won and the three judge panel of the Ohio appellate court just made it absolutely clear that the Board of Commissioners does have the authority to make these rules. That case has been challenged 16 times and that precedent law has stood and withstood every challenge. And that court said exactly what I've been trying to tell you all and the solid waste committee for six months. Then it went to the federal district court in 1999.
Ms. Davis?
Yeah.
If you can tie it up, you have about five seconds.
The most important thing is to thank those of you who are stepping forward in recognizing what the residents have been going through. Ms. Reese got transparency, she got the meetings on Zoom, she got them to allow public comments tomorrow. And she got a hell of an applause from the people in southwest Hamilton County and Colrain, Whitewater, Cleaves, all of them were just grateful for Ms. Reese calling this out for what it was clearly and unequivocally. So thank you all.
Thank you so much. Okay, we'll move forward to comments and motions, Vice President Reese.
Yes, Madam President, I just want to remind everyone, there is an election, November 2nd, Hamilton County, throughout Hamilton County. I know there's a lot of media attention on the city of Cincinnati, but we have elections throughout Hamilton County. There are also levy issues that are on the ballot and certainly children is a, is on the ballot this time. So, and that is countywide, the children's services levy. So wanted to just let people know that Election Day is November 2nd. However, there is early voting and I want to commend our Hamilton County Board of Elections. I think we were number one last year in how we handled early voting with the new Early Vote Center. As a board, we voted to make that a permanent location for early voting. We also have utilized that space for COVID. We had COVID-19, was able to give the shots there. So we've been able to use that property. We always talk about using these facilities in multiple ways and not just one way, but it is now open as an early vote center and people can go and early vote and voting is happening now. The last day to vote will be November 2nd. In addition to that, we're always promoting jobs and employment opportunities. My understanding that Hamilton County Board of Elections is in need of poll workers on Election Day, a variety of positions paying over $100. So if you're interested in being a poll worker on that day, that means you need to go ahead and vote before November 2nd because you'll be working on November 2nd to make sure everyone else's votes are run in a professional way. So again, they could go to voteHamiltonCountyOhio.gov. And just wanted to put that out there, we do need poll workers, good people who want to work on Election Day to help make sure that all of our elections run very smoothly. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
Thank you. And let me pile on and say they're also looking for folks to load and unload the ballots over at the BOE. So it's not an inside poll worker job so much as someone, I think it's the night before and the day of the election. So lots of opportunities at the Board of Election. Thank you for reminding me of that. Alex Linsor reminded me that they're looking for folks. Yeah, and two other things I have very quickly. One is I joined Commissioner Reese out in Westwood for, it was a health fair out in the Westwood community, the great turnout out there, the, the 513 relief bus was there and JFS and Public Health were doing a fantastic job of meeting the needs really of the people that had come out in the community. And so I just want to say that that looked like a very successful event with many, many partners. And then lastly, I had the opportunity with my staff to visit our animal shelter. I get a lot of questions about our animal shelter and about the dog warden. And I haven't been down there since the new group care, since St. Care has taken over. And so it was an interesting visit. They're doing a lot to try to have a no kill policy. So they're working with the animals, they're working with the owners of the animals to try to keep them safe. But it, it's a struggle. They've got a lot of animals in that facility right now. So I just want to give them a big shout out and say to everyone, there are many, many dogs and cats available for adoption in Hamilton County. So if anyone's interested, visit our website and you can find the information to give an animal a loving home in your home. So anyway, they were very helpful in helping me better understand all the changes that have taken place. Thank you.
Thank you. I will limit my comments. I was involved with a few webinars this week and Zoom calls. As you mentioned, animal care, and I don't go down there because I know what will happen, but I'm sure we're in good hands, but.
Not adopt an animal. Well, I was.
But I did ask Jeff for the possibility of looking into maybe a temporary expansion area where we can, you know, not have them so crowded in their cages. And I know he's looking into that because they're, as you said, they are overwhelmed with animals. So I know he's looking into that possibility. So I'll leave the comments because we're running a little late. We have a few more things to do, executive session. And Jeff, I will go to you.
Thank you, Madam President. Have three by leaves today, no comments, just three by leaves today. The first is labeled by leave one in your, in your packet or on your, in front of you on the desk. This is a resolution to amend the Hamilton County Purchasing Manual, to update section four of the purchasing manual for purchases using federal funds. Whenever we do purchases of any type, the, the regulations have to follow or the purchasing practice has to follow the regulation. So when we're using federal funds, we have to follow federal, federal procurement law or we're using state funds, state law, et cetera. So what this would, there have been some changes to federal purchasing law that we want to make our manual, that we want to update our manual to reflect. Primarily this ups the allowance for micro purchases from 3,500 to 10,000. And it lifts from 150,000 to 250,000, the threshold for competitive bidding. So the, you know, this again is only when federal funds are being used. This hasn't, this would not be for use of local dollars, but when federal funds are used, these standards would apply as they need to, to reflect federal purchasing laws. So the administration recommends approval, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Vice President Reese.
Thank you. I, I do have a question about, I got the $10,000 threshold. Could you go over the other competitive threshold and what, I, I know the numbers, but can you explain what that?
Yes, yeah. So, so currently the, the threshold for competitive bidding under the federal purchasing policy is 150,000. So that would be lifted to 250,000. So anything under there still requires some sort of competitive procurement in terms of quotes, that type of thing. But it, it limits your need to actually do full blown competitive bids. So it's, I believe in a desire to simplify and streamline the, the federal procurement practices.
Madam President?
Yes.
And on those federal procurement, I know federal funds, they do have, they do have minority business components. So I just, are we following that? Have we updated our manual for that? Because that would be like CDBG dollars, I guess, is all federal funds. We got quite a bit of money there and we, and I know all of us are looking at ways to improve our numbers of inclusion with minority businesses, et cetera. So does this, does the, will we use those federal dollars? Is our procurement updated to the federal guidelines of MBEs?
Yeah, I, I can check fully across our purchasing manual, but I know typically federal procurement follows DBE or disadvantaged business enterprise. And we have done that when we have used federal procurement on whether it's good services, et cetera, like down at the banks, we follow DBE because whenever we've received a federal grant. But yes, broadly speaking, that if whatever, whatever policy applies through the federal, through the federal procurement policy, we would have to follow that when implemented. So I can do a more wholesale check on all the areas where we're using federal funds like community development block grants, et cetera. But yes, by and large, we would be following that, yes.
Thank you. Yes, Madam President, I would like to get a update back to our board on that because I think it's, I don't know if it's Title IX or something like that. When it comes to housing, I just was on a, a conference that Xavier and some other housing folks are hosting. They had the assistant, assistant director, assistant secretary rather, of HUD. And the, the whole thing was said, it was called Race, Wealth and Home Ownership. And they were saying that sometimes when we get these federal dollars for housing, particularly, they have something, I think it's Title IX or something where minorities or the people that live there can get opportunities to be the businesses. So my point is if we're going to be moving into those spaces and the federal piece, I just want to know, are there any other federal guidelines that we may need to update with our procurement component as we go into affordable housing? All of this will be federal dollars. And if that is maybe an opportunity as we are waiting on our disparity, which takes, going to take a little bit of time, are these opportunities for us to have more inclusion or, you know, to be able to move that needle like we all are trying to do? So just want to put that on table.
We can check in, I get a report back to the board, absolutely.
That'd be great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Commissioner Drehouse.
I have no questions.
Okay, with no further comments, I'd like to make, make a motion to adopt by leave one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. By leave, I believe by leave number two in your packet relates to a resolution amending Hamilton County's American Rescue Plan Act funding plan to allocate additional funding to small business grants. As the board is aware, we received applications for our small business grants very recently and those requests exceed, exceeded our 4.1 million allocation by approximately seven or over $7 million. I believe the board has been clear that you, the board as a whole would like to avoid a lottery, which is what our default remedy is in that case, that we proceed to a lottery and we, we segment into different sizes of businesses and run a lottery. And at the end of the day, if you win the lottery, you have the opportunity to get the grant. So I know that the board has wanted to try to avoid that. So in order to do that, we need to adjust our ARP plan to pull money from the ARP into our current small business program. And the resolution in front of you reflects that. It shows 4.794 million being allocated out of the, the reserve, roughly 4.8 million. We also have 3 million that is currently in the ARP plan and we have 4.1 million remaining in CARES Act funds that would all, all be used and all be put together to fund roughly the $11 million program. And I would say that at the end of the day, we don't think we're going to be spending all of that. As happens in every round of grants we've seen, the number of, the amount we've received in applications ultimately is not going to wind up being the amount that we put out in grant funds. Hope it's as close as possible, but we ultimately will find folks that asked for something they were ineligible for, et cetera. There's a whole host of reasons why we won't spend exactly what we, we budget in this case. But nonetheless, we want to make sure that we have the dollars there so that HCDC, who's our administrator on this, can begin paring through these applications, knowing that we're not doing the lottery and they can start into this right now. So happy to answer any questions, Commissioners.
Thank you so much, Jeff. It was just very clear to me when I heard that we had more applications than anticipated, that I did not want to go to a lottery, which means for those that are listening, even though you need the money, you may not be the lucky one to, to get picked. And so we as a board decided we're going to put our money where our mouths are and that if somebody has a small business and they are eligible by the criteria that we have established, that every business gets the money. And this by leave will allow for us to move money around so everyone who's eligible can get it. Vice President Reese.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I do agree with moving forward with this. And you write about the lottery, I remember, you know, when they hit, when I don't know, 200 million, 300 million, I've run out and say, let me put a dollar on it and I never get picked. I never, I don't have a good, good lucky hand on that. I am supportive of this. The only thing that I brought up, and, and before I go there, I do want to thank the Urban League and HCDC because there was a, a Small Business Day they hosted and they were out there and people came and it was really good because there were a lot of people who didn't, who never had to ask the government for anything. We're looking at a lot of small businesses who take pride, they put their own money up, their own savings, everything they got. And then they got hit with COVID and some of them were shut down. I mean, when beauty and barber shops get shut down for weeks, I mean, we never thought to see that day come. And then when they opened up, they say. And then when they open up, they say you gotta, you gotta put some new Plexiglas and some new rules, and you don't have no new money because you're just getting open and you go week for week. So we saw a variety of businesses that showed up, and it was, it's great that we have, at least they knew, you know, they knew about it, they could participate, they were able to walk them through the process. So I think that's all positive. I support this, but I do want to make sure I put something on the table as we're going into our new budget for next year. And I guess years to come, you know, I'm very committed to having a small business, the county's first ever small business department. And that could be done like we do our Economic Development Department. We don't really have a whole department. We contract that out. But we do have an economic development experts. And I just want to make sure, and just to say that I'm supportive of moving this money over. This was one of my top priorities when each of us had to give in our priorities, and we're not able to talk to each other, but we all put our priorities in. As small business, I wanted that money there for next year and the years after that we could leverage to have this department, to have an ongoing presence, to begin to lay a good foundation that we are going to be the number one county for small businesses. Any county that's going to grow futuristically must be a county that can really be a place where small businesses can just flourish. So I'm willing to move this money, but I don't want next year to be zeroed out or the year after because I really think that we're on the move as a county. We have these relationships now, and this could be something that helps us, from an investment standpoint, grow in the future. So I know this will empty us out. I just would ask that the board, and I talked about this too, Jeff, and I did not want to come and bring a motion, it was recommended, maybe you get a motion today or a resolution today. I didn't want to do that. I just want to make sure that we're open to it as we go to the next phase. I don't want to hear, we can't do it, we ain't got no money. I want to make sure that we move that direction because I think keeping this momentum and moving in the direction, maybe it's not just grants, but it's other things that we could do. We, I think it's important for us to have, from an infrastructural standpoint, a part of our whole operation, a small business division or department. So I wanted to put that on the table. I will be coming back from a finance standpoint and hope to have support since we're going to move the money that I was going to use for next time. We're moving it to this time. But I totally agree with you. People need help now, and we don't want those doors shut. So I do support this byleave. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Drehouse.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, just a couple of things. We've talked a little bit about the nature of the lottery, and I just want to make sure that the folks that have applied for these dollars understand that the lottery is instead of first come, first served. So it's better than first come, first served because so many people at the federal level through the PPP program were not in line first, and they did not get the money. And so many of them were the very small businesses or minority-owned businesses that don't have a relationship with their bank, or they don't have an accountant on staff. And there was just a real disparity there. And so we said, all right, we've got a pot of money, we're going to do, instead of first come, first served, we're going to do a lottery if we don't have enough dollars for every business that is eligible. So in each round so far, we've had two, we have had enough money set aside for all the businesses that were eligible, thankfully, and we were able to move forward. So this is our third time, we've learned something from the last two rounds. And I think, I mean, that we've got so many businesses that have applied this time, is a real credit to staff and the Urban League and the African-American Chamber and our other partners, HCDC, who have amplified the fact that we have this money available. And so we've got many more that have applied and are likely eligible than we anticipated, which actually is good news, I suppose, but we just don't have the dollars to match it. And so Jeff, I want to just be clear on where the money's coming from. So is, was it 3 million coming from CARES?
So we had 4.1 in CARES.
Okay, so, and the CARES is the, kind of the old pot of money. And then we've got the new pot of money, which is the American Rescue Plan Fund, and we had set aside 3 million there.
Correct.
And then the reserve is close to five, which is kind of the additional. So I guess the question is relative to some of the other conversation, how much is left in the reserve related to anything else like this program that, you know, we get this really large volume of folks that need the help, and we have to shift dollars around? So what's, after this moves out?
Following this, there will be 4.49 million still remaining in the reserve. So there will be dollars still left in the reserve. And I would also say to the board that the plan, as we have it allocated right now, we know there will be money within this plan and other line items as well because we will not be spending every, just what we learned from CARES, we had to reallocate numerous times, and there will be money following to the bottom line continually over the next several years, likely. But to your direct question, we will still have about four and a half million in reserves. So to Commissioner Reese's question, if the board did it at a future date, want to allocate an additional $2, $3 million, whatever it is, into a small business program for whether it was future grants or future activities of a business office, et cetera, there's still the ability to do that.
Yeah, and I think, from my perspective, we just keep learning as we go, you know, and so we do have some flexibility related to what we do next year, whether it's another round of this or another round of rent assistance or mortgage assistance or whatever we learn as we go, as far as the ongoing need in the community, you know, we're able to move some of these dollars around. So I support this, too. I'm grateful that so many businesses will benefit from this and that we're able to move some money, that we've kept some aside for things just like this. So I'm hopeful that as many have applied, most of them are eligible, and some of them will fall off, but hopefully not too many. So thank you.
Thank you. And I think we had about 1,200 applications, and our allocation for money was really intelligent guesstimate, I should say. When we talk about reserve, we're talking about the reserve for the American Rescue Plan, excuse me, not our general budget reserve. So just want to make that very clear. So we asked staff to go out and figure how we can get more people interested, how we can get more people applying, and it worked. And so now we have to be able to meet those needs. So I want to thank the staff also for their work and just making sure that more people knew about this effort. Okay, no additional comments. I'd like to make a motion to adopt byleave two.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Byleave three in front of you is entitled Resolution Accepting the Amounts and Rates as Determined by the Budget Commission and Authorizing the Necessary Tax Levis and Certifying Them to the County Auditor. So this is really a ministerial item. Annually, the Budget Commission has to, by law, certify the taxation levels that need to be certified to the tax duplicate and express whether or not they are within or without the, or outside of the 10 mil limitation in the county. So that's what this document does. The Budget Commission meets annually to certify this and send something to the Board of County Commissioners indicating that these are the taxation levels for all of the special invoked levies, as well as the general fund millage that needs to be assessed in order to bring in the revenue needs established by those individual levies. So this is something the board approves every year. I believe Budget Director Brugan is here. We also have, is Ms. Disk on the line as well? I believe we have a representative from the auditor on the line as well, if there are any questions on this. The administration recommends approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jeff. Vice President Reese, any questions or comments?
No.
I have no questions either. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to adopt byleave three.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. No, that would conclude my byleaves.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll move forward with our regular agenda. He's been waiting patiently. Mr. Beck, our engineer.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
I have several items here today. The first one is item number one, which is a resolution awarding a contract to the lowest and best bidder, JTM Smith Construction for the Rapid Run Road Bridge in Delhi Township. This is Project 501 722. Our engineer's estimate was 412,668, and the low bid was 408,281.79, and this funding is 100% permissive auto fund.
From the?
100% from the what? Permissive auto.
Okay, all right. You kind of faded away on, I thought that's what you were saying, yeah. Any comments or questions?
Yep.
Okay, hearing that, I'd like to make a motion to receive for the record item one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Items two, three, and four are very similar, so I will, I'll read them each separately, but I'll give you the explanation here first. These are our letters reporting back to you our findings on annexation petitions. All three of these were, our recommendation is to deny them at this point. There's corrections that need to be made. The first one is item number two, the report on annexation petition for 85.326 acres from Sims Township to the city of, city of the Village of Indian Hill.
So denial was why?
They have mistakes on their plaque. They did not, I believe that all three of them, they were missing parcel numbers. So we've got back to the applicant with the information, and they will make corrections and resubmit to the board.
Great, thank you. Any comments or questions? Hearing that, I'd like to make a motion to receive for the record item two.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number three is the engineer's report on the annexation petition for 160.166 acres from Columbia Township to the city of the Village of Indian Hill. And for the same reasons, I recommend denying that at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing that, I'd like to make a motion to receive for the record item three.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you.
And item number four is the engineer's report on annexation petition for 408.213 acres from Sims Township to the city of the Village of Indian Hill. And for the same reasons, we recommend that you don't approve it at this time.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing that, I'd like to make a motion to receive for the record item four.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Madam President?
Yes.
If I could briefly, and just a quick discussion with Attorney Friedman here, I think on item number one, the verbal motion that was made was to receive for the record when, in fact, we want to actually adopt that one. So.
I called earlier about that because it wasn't on there, so.
Yeah, it is not listed, but that would be to adopt, correct.
All right, let's go back then for item number one. I'd make a motion to adopt item number one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Can I ask a point of clarity? Do we need to rescind something before we make a motion to adopt it?
For the record.
So now we're just passing it?
It doesn't really matter.
Okay.
Proceed with it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So where are we?
I think she was calling the roll.
Okay.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Friedman. So let's move on to our consent items on agenda. We have two items to receive for the record, items five through seven. Are there any comments as it relates to those items? Hearing that, I'd like to make a motion to receive for the record, it's item five through seven.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. And for adoption, are there any comments as it relates to item eight through 17?
Vice President Reese.
No comments?
No comments.
Okay. Like to make, like to make a motion to adopt items eight through 17.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.
Thank you so much. We have an executive session. I'd like to make a motion to go to executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G4 regarding collective bargaining.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse.
Yes.